We're on.
Okay.
Mayor?
We're on.
We are on. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. And we've got kind of a full house this evening. And we have a lot of folks here in uniform. So I haven't seen this many in a long time. So welcome, everyone. And I'm going to call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mayor, could we get a roll call, please? Bolson?
Here.
Sykes?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kellum?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And we have a couple special presentations this evening. And as you can tell, with all the folks here in uniform, it's the Albany Police Department. So chief and captains.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to ask Officer Ben Hatley to come up here. Tonight, we are awarding Ben Hatley the Medal of Valor. On Sunday, February 18th, at about 08:06 hours, Officer Ben Hatley and Officer Brianna Hedrick responded to a disturbance. They encountered a man inside a residence who had threatened to kill his mother. The man disregarded commands and armed himself with two wooden baseball bats. He threatened Officers Hatley and Hedrick by swinging the bats over his head and running towards them. Another adult female roommate was in the bedroom behind the suspect, which caused Officer Hatley concerned in using his firearm. Officer Hedrick tased the suspect, which was effective for a few seconds until the suspect removed the probes from his body. The suspect dropped the bats, but regained his feet and began challenging the officers. Officer Hatley and Hedrick quickly escorted the mother to safety out the front door. The suspect locked the door, attempting to barricade himself inside with roommate. Officer Hatley decisively went to the east side of the residence and crawled through the roommate's bedroom window to protect her from imminent danger. Officer Hatley put himself between the adult female and the suspect. Officer Hatley ordered the suspect to surrender as he was now unarmed. The suspect refused and forced Officer Hatley to deploy his taser. The taser was ineffective as the suspect worked out one of the probes. The suspect tried to barricade himself into his bedroom. However, Officer Hatley prevented him from doing so by kicking the door in. Officer Hatley courageously attempted to take the suspect into custody by physically subduing him to stop his acts of violence. During the fight, the suspect attempted to disarm Officer Hatley by grabbing his holster firearm. Officer Hatley delivered focused strikes to the suspect. The suspect continued to fight and intentionally bit down Officer Hatley's hand, breaking the skin. Officer Hatley fought the suspect for an estimated two minutes until Officer Hedrick was able to enter the residence and assist in pinning the suspect down under the bed. Officers Hatley and Hedrick held the suspect down until additional officers arrived and assisted in taking him into custody. The suspect was taken to Lynn County Jail and lodged on three counts of menacing, assaulting a police officer, harassment, and resisting arrest. This was a serious encounter with a violent suspect who was willing to harm others. Because of Officer Hatley's actions, no citizens were injured, and the suspect was taken into custody without having to use deadly force. Congratulations. Good job.
Here.
Gee, I'm almost as tall as he is when I'm up here on the stairs.
This is your medal. And this is your plaque. Good job. One more time. Good job. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Wow, that is just an amazing situation. And two minutes of struggling with somebody, I just must have seemed like a lifetime. So but but thank you so much for your service. That was very brave, brave situation. But thank you. We're very fortunate to have have you on the police force. And all of you, we are so fortunate for our city's protection. And you do a fantastic job. And I know it's one of the toughest jobs out there in the whole workforce in this whole world. So we just are so so grateful for everything that you do. So and there's a lot, lot of police personnel here that aren't in uniform that I see too and recognize faces and thank, thank all, we really thank you from the bottom of our hearts. So thank you. Okay, all right. We've got Chief Bradner here.
Okay, if I could have Brandon McKnight and his grandfather, Robin McKnight, come forward, please. So this is kind of a slightly unusual civilian, go ahead and join us up here, civilian lifesaving award. For those of you that remember, Robin retired as a police officer from the city of Albany how many years ago? 2010. So about eight years ago. And on August 26th of 2017, the McKnight family decided to go on a vacation down in the Redwoods down out of Creston City, California, and go kayaking along the Smith River. And while they were kayaking there, well, first of all, let me back up. Brandon was kind of a late minute addition to the to the to the family vacation. But while they were down there, Robin kayaking on the river, doing that for the very first time, ended up having his kayak fill up with water. And actually, I will use his words that he gave, so you can kind of get the idea of what was occurring. So Robin stated that "The water tumbled me, taking me down to the bottom as if it was sucking me down. I fought to get to the surface only to get a small amount of air on three different tries, and then on the fourth time, I did not get any air before sinking back down. At this point, I knew I was in trouble. I was exhausted, and my body relaxed, and I floated backwards down to the bottom of the river while looking up to the surface. The light started to fade away to darkness, as if a tunnel going dark. Brandon saw what was happening and saw that I stopped fighting to get above the water. Brandon jumped in the water with no regard to his life and swam over and grabbed me and pulled me up." And so even though this didn't happen to our community, it happened to one of our citizens, it happened to one of our former employees. And so we really wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Brandon and thank him for his service and for saving a life. So tonight, we're going to present you with a civilian lifesaving award presented to Brandon McKnight, hereby awarded the certificate for his heroic efforts in saving the life of Robin McKnight on August 26, 2017. Congratulations. And I also have one of our challenge coins that I want to present you with and ask you if you'd like to say anything at all.
I think the last time that I actually spoke was in front of graduation, and there was much more people. So this is a lot better. Not so much with a lot of cops, that's a little bit different in my generation than it was today. But in our reality, I would have done it for anybody. I would have done it for any person that needed it. So as far as that goes, this is my grandpa, Robin McKnight. I love him.
Thank you guys very much.
Wow, that's amazing. So and actually, and Robin did one thing for me many years ago. Well, actually, we've known each other since we were kids. But I had a person that had some kind of mental issues and had me, he was down on Front Street, and that's, gosh, it's been probably close to, I don't know, 18, 20 years ago. And had me, had just, the guy had just beat up a person right in front of me and then had me backed up against the wall. And I thought, okay, I'm next. I was trying to keep him as calm as can be. And who comes up as a corner, out of the corner of my eye was Robin. So I was ever so grateful that he was on his way down to the Front Street Tavern on a call and got that call. And it was just perfect timing. But that is, that's one incident I will never forget, and I'm so grateful for you to have been on duty at the right time. So but yeah, but thank you. And thank you so much, Brandon. Thank you. Okay, all right, chiefs, is that, is that it? Okay, all right, thank you, folks. And for our scheduled business this evening, first is business from the public. Is there anyone here that would like to bring an item forward to us this evening? Okay, not seeing anyone. Council, next, we have a adoption of a resolution. This one is on page three. And and this would be for provision, this is for David Shaw's retirement party.
Move to approve, second.
Okay, all right.
We'll make that so you can just do it any old time.
Well, I think, well, the reason we've had the policy years back was if people were wanting to use City Hall for certain functions, and then it would be harder to try to oversee that if we're not, if it's not city staff that's at this function, and then if you're having alcohol, then it would be difficult. So that's why, ever since City Hall's been built for, you know, over 20 years now, that's been the policy. Okay, more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, and next is adoption of the consent calendar. And we have four sets of minutes and license renewals. If there's anything that needs to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next, this one is on page 26, and this would be for ODOT for construction of emergency vehicle warning sign and flasher online in six. Is there any questions? Do you have a staff on this?
Is it the same as it was presented two months ago or whatever it was?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is, the amendment modifies the agreement that was approved a year ago in March for the improvements online in Ellsworth to support the fire station. And this amendment just incorporates the traffic signal, that's the intersection of six and Ellsworth.
Move to approve, second.
Yeah, I'm going to vote no on this again because I think it's inadequate.
You think it's white?
I think just a little blinky yellow light there is inadequate for our fire station. A couple of times I've been over the hasty freeze, and I've seen fire trucks and ambulants waiting for traffic to go by so they can pull out. And I, I think a stop sign would be a stop light is more appropriate there so our trucks can go out now. I'm going to vote no.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye. Stacy, when do you think that's going to bid?
I think in June. The plans are more or less done, they're just going through one more ODOT review.
And I realize it's not our city staff that's doing this, it's a good old ODOT in there, wisdom. Wisdom? You noted my sarcasm? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Next is an appointment for Matthew Koopman to the Transit Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Move to approve, second.
Just one comment, I was very happy to see and hear that he's in the process of moving to Albany.
Yeah, yeah.
It is, it is a little ironic.
Yes.
I have made the, I guess, I noticed that everyone on a whole bunch of committees downtown are all from Ward One. And now everybody, if he moves where he said he was going to move to, now every single person on the Transit Lodging Tax Committee is going to be from Ward One. Which, no, I didn't even recognize it. I mean, the guy is a CFO of OFD Foods. I picked him because of his financial capabilities. But I didn't worry about where he was from because I was lucky for someone, but it's just a little ironic that I complained kind of in midair that they're all from Ward One, and then I put another one from Ward One in their place.
Is he going to live in our downtown slum? Or is he going to live in our downtown slum or in North Albany?
I kind of doubt it. I think it's probably North Albany.
Is he inside the city limits or outside?
Doesn't make any difference. He works inside the city limits.
Oh, that's right. So, okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, next, this would be on page 41, and this would be the Pheasant Run subdivision approval findings. Is there any questions of staff or?
Move to approve, second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm going to vote no again.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right, and with that, within five days of the City Council's final decision on this application, the Community Development Director will provide written notice of decision to the applicant and any other parties entitled to notice. A decision of the City Council may be appealed by persons with standing to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, by filing a notice of intent to appeal to LUBA not more than 21 days after the decision becomes final. All right, okay. Next is rates for rural fire districts. This is on page 42. And Chief?
Well, good evening again. I'm glad I came back in the room, and I did, I almost missed it. So as the council is well aware, we have contracts with three rural fire districts that surround the city of Albany. Two of those agreements expire June 30th of this year, and we need to decide how we're going to move forward with extending those agreements. Currently, the rate is $2 per thousand that the rural districts pay. And any rate increase was to be communicated to those boards by January 1st of 2017 per the existing agreement. At this point in time, the city can decide to extend the contracts for a shorter duration and then commission a rate study to continue the, or continue the agreements for a longer period of time, such as the current term of five years. I have received a price quote from one outside consulting firm that would perform a rate study, and they're able to complete that rate analysis for $16,500 plus then another $500 to present the report. In your council packet, you should have had the agreements in there, both of them are identical, and it lists the terms and conditions of the agreement and, or of the agreements. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or contribute any discussion that you might have about about this.
Bessie?
Yeah, Chief, with the length of the contract, I mean, wouldn't that actually be better for us because we know what it's going to be, but also for the different fire districts because they don't, wouldn't have to go out for votes so often? I mean, is, I mean, five years is kind of a long time, but I just wondered, is that a good term or would a longer term?
So these two districts, North Albany and Palestine, both have serial operating levies. So they do, in addition to their permit tax rate, have to go out to the voters. North Albany went out to the voters in November of 2016. So their current rate started in July of 2017, and then Palestine is a year behind them. So their new rate of what the voters approved of their levy won't start until July 1st of this year. So we've kind of set it up so that that's five years, and then we're going on five years as well. If we wanted to go a longer term, I'm sure they wouldn't be opposed to it. It helps them to be able to plan better. But they do still have to continue to go back out to the voters every five years to pass a levy.
Have they ever not passed it?
Yes, North Albany did not pass their levy, I'm going to say maybe 12-ish years ago or so. And so we actually had a period of, it was back when the double majority was required. And so they passed, but they didn't get the double majority. And so then we actually carried them for a period of time, and we continued to provide the service until they had the opportunity to go out during a general election. They passed it during the general election, and then over the next three or four years, I don't remember the exact timeframe now, but over the next period of time, they then paid that back, what they were in arrears.
Great.
And owed.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
So the idea of doing this, a fire rate study, any idea what that would cost?
Yes, the quote I received was $16,500 plus $500 to present it.
So I think, I'd like to discuss having the city move ahead with that. If we do decide that $2 is too low, can we adjust it under this current contract or not?
Under the current contract, no.
Because five years, we would be...
Yeah, if we did an extended contract and then determined that we want to do that, we would have to provide ample notice for them to be able to go back out to the voters and either pass a new levy or a levy on top of that levy.
Well, I had a concern when we started discussing Millersburg. And I think, as I recall, it was like, well, the current rate's $2 we use with all the other districts, and we should use that rate without really considering if that really captures our true costs or not. And I can't believe that $2 works, you know, out into the future. I understand property values in theory would increase and generate more revenue, but that's not always the case. So what's your opinion or what do you think the value of spending 16 grand on?
Yeah. So one of the concerns is that if you go to a consultant, you may end up getting an answer that the rate should actually be lower. When we looked at, with the Millersburg process IGA that we just went through, when we looked at other comparable rates, they were anywhere from $1.35 to $1.81 for other districts in Oregon municipalities that charge their rural area a fee. And so the concern would be that we would end up potentially with a lower rate, which then obviously would have a negative impact upon us. Under the current agreement, the maximum that a rate can be increased is by the CPIW for the previous five years. So if we were to have said, yes, we were going to go out and increase the rate, and then we looked at the CPI for the last five years, which was 5.575%, on $2, that's 11.3 cents, 11 cents. So the maximum we could increase it to would be $2.11. One of the things that, when Stuart was here, he and I had five years ago a similar conversation. And we, we receive additional revenue from the rural districts above the $2 per thousand. Albany Rural is the largest one. Their contract's not up, but they're the ones that have historically given us additional money above and beyond the $2 per thousand. Over the last 10 years, they have contributed $725,000 toward our equipment replacement fund. And actually, in talks with them right now for, in this coming fiscal year, for them to provide us with $256,000 or about $250,000 toward the purchase of replacement of our watercraft. So they are contributing more than just that $2 per thousand, and they've been willing to do that. North Albany, in the past, contributed money towards some hydrants that the city didn't have to pay for out in that area. So there has been additional funds that have been put toward it. So so that would probably be my biggest concern if we did move forward with it. The other point I wanted to make is that we took a look at this fiscal year, so 10 months of this fiscal year, what percentage of our calls are we running in the three rural districts, and what percentage of our calls are not in those districts? And and the total percentage of calls in the first 10 months of this year that we run in the three rural districts is 2.27%. So they don't make up a large amount. I think I told you previously during the Millersburg IGA was 95.5, and that was a rough guesstimation based on some different numbers. I asked my assistant chief to actually go back and actually tally all the numbers, and it was 2.27%. From looking at EFCI, this firm that we have the quote from, they've done rate studies for other departments. They usually don't just look at assessed value, they look at other factors such as call volume, such as population, such as, you know, different things like that. So chances are, they would bring in more than just the one factor in to make the determination.
And that's ambulance and fire, isn't it?
Yes, we provide both ambulance and fire into the rural district.
Well, that's a good explanation, and I guess with that knowledge, I'm comfortable with this agreement. And they're building a fire station out there also, aren't they?
Well, that's out in Millersburg. This is, this is North Albany and Palestine contracts that are up in Benton County.
So did you do the study then on that 2-point-some percent in the rural districts, basing that on population, those calls compared to what percentage of Albany's population had the amount of calls?
It did not do a comparison based on the 2.27% based on the, I think in our, I'd have to go and look and see exactly what the rural district population is. We've got those numbers from the past from Portland State, we'll get a breakdown on that. But I did not look at a comparison of population, no.
So I think it would be beneficial to have this, this study done, so, yeah.
We have a greater chance of losing than we have gaining.
We just finished the budget.
From $1.35 to $1.70, whatever.
Eighty-two, I think.
Dollar eighty-two, dollar eighty-two at the top, and when we're only doing 2%.
I do think, though, I question some of those studies.
You know, we just got out of a budget meeting, and we all understand the status of the budget. I'm not willing to gamble that kind of money. It'd be a loss for the fire department.
I disagree. I don't think it'll be a loss, but yeah. Okay, Council, what would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve, second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Chief. So, okay, we are really cruising along here this evening, so I am curious, we do have some young adults with us. It must be a class project you're working on? Yeah, what school? What is it? Lynn Benton? Yeah, well, welcome this evening. So you should be almost out of school soon. When is the last day? Oh, getting close, yes. So well, welcome, thank you for coming, so, yeah. Well, and then last night, actually, our budget meeting went on until after 9:30. And then two weeks ago, our meeting, we didn't get done till 11:00. So this is kind of a treat for us this evening to have this quick meeting. You picked a good night to come, so, yeah. Okay, business from the council, Bessie?
I just want to say thank you to Peter and all the department heads and staff that worked on the budget. You know, it's a task that needs to be done, and hopefully it'll be easier in the next couple of years and so, but I know they work hard doing, getting it all together and stuff, so I just want to thank them.
All right. Thank you, Bessie. Yeah, Bill?
Nothing.
No, Dick?
Yeah, I was thinking about bringing it up last night, but the meeting was contentious and getting kind of long. And I wanted to say that I went to a supper in appreciation of our volunteers for our library. And there were 60-some people there, and Director Gallagher said that they were part of the, I think he said, 76 volunteers that we have that help in the library. And I was pleased they considered me a volunteer, so. I think that shows that some of the things that we do that are more enjoyable, fun, interesting are supported by the public and by their volunteering to do it, and they are really helping the cost and doing a good job with those functions, too. And I know we have similar, if not even more, volunteers with our parks. And I know we have similar, if not even more, volunteers with our parks, so. So I wanna thank our manager for, and our staff for doing a good job of making Albany an enjoyable place to be, and enjoyable for our volunteers, too, so, thanks.
Yeah, that's nice, thank you, Dick. Yeah, okay, Rich?
I have just an item. The county is in the process of putting their transient lodging tax together, and they're not there yet, but in dealing with how to collect it, the state is talking about collection, only they're not ready, and according to what some of the folks that testified over there the other day, they're not gonna be ready for a while. I mean, they're starting to go into rulemaking, which, you know, that's months and months and months and months. I understand, our system, we're thinking of going down the same way, if it, if it works out. I ask whether or not, what it would cost us to, for that portion only in Albany, not outside, because if they added their 3% to our 9, and we collected it and wrote, wrote the county a check, how much that would cost, and I was told, well, not really much, anything. Anyway, I would, I would think that if, does anybody have a, an issue if staff, if staff can work out the, the bugs, if there are any, of us doing that for a little bit of nothing, for them while we wait until the state is ready to find out, if they're ready to start collecting for everybody? And I'm not saying that we would be authorizing this to happen, I would just wonder whether or not, if anybody has heartburn about it, with staff then being able to deal with, if it makes sense.
And again, you're thinking it'd just be short-term, till they get to-
Yeah, a year, two years.
It's a bridge.
It's a bridge, and it's a, one check every, you know, and it's only for that portion that's in Albany, this is not the rest of the areas, just, so, you know, we, it's the same people that we collect from, at the same time, it allows our businesses to write one check, or make one transfer instead of more than that, and then we make one transfer per given timeframe.
I don't think I have any issue, as long as I'm confident that there's not any issues from staff.
Yeah.
And the other piece that I've been thinking is any legal reason that, bookkeeping, and you know, that type of thing.
It's done, it's done a lot of places now.
So, you know, I've had the staff look at the legal side.
Be worth looking at, sure.
So I'm not quite clear, why is it taking so long for the state on the rulemaking?
It's gonna cost them $900,000 that they don't have the money.
With the state?
The state does not, has not transferred the money to get things, and then they have to build the bureaucracy.
Or the staff, yeah.
Yeah, they have to build, and then they have to, see, they, they don't have anybody to actually do it, and they don't have anybody to then do the work of the audits. I mean, our people go and, and do audits here, there, and yah.
So, so, but the state is already, they're already collecting, it's already, the hotel is already paying the state anyway, and then it's passed through, so what are they creating differently?
Don't know.
That would be costing $100,000.
That was not, that was not part of the conversation.
I think that needs to be, yeah, checked into.
But that's a second, it's outside of our, it's outside of our purview.
It's not something we have to do, as long as, you know, people won't have issues with it.
So do the hotels present, they write a check to the state, or do they write it to us?
Oh, they write it to the state.
To us.
I was gonna say, I can-
To us. Where ours.
And in the Finance and Taxation Committee through LLC, we've discussed this, and this is gonna be one of the bullet points that we're gonna probably be getting, but it's basically, almost like the marijuana tax, you know, where they collect it, you know, for the cities and stuff, but everybody agrees, they don't have the program ready, they, they don't have the staff to do it, and also, my big question was, we audit our hotels, and we've got everything under control and stuff, that's like losing local control if we do that, I mean, it's gonna cost, I mean, I don't know why they're going that route, I really don't, but, no, they're not near ready.
May I propose that we look at it and get back to you with some of the answers to your questions?
I think so.
My objection would be that it looks like we're raising the rate on the hotels at 3%. They say, well, there goes the damn city again, now this tax is 12%, and the darned city's taken it all.
The, the hotels would be notified by, by the county.
Well, yeah, they're gonna tell the homeowners and groaners, they're gonna complain out there, household habits, and it'll make it look like, like we're getting 12%.
It doesn't say, when you, when you go to a hotel-
I don't, usually.
It's a city.
Hold on, I was just in Louisville, it, it doesn't say Louisville, and whatever county, and the state, and anything else, it just says transient lodging tax, or room tax, or you know, one-time shot.
I'm not worried about the customer, I'm worried about the complainers that we are constantly badgered by.
Well, aren't they customers?
Well, I don't think our hotel customers are complaining about us, I think it's the, you know, people that run the hotels.
I think there needs to be some clarification, so like Peter said, he'll check into it and give back to the council.
That's all I have.
If it's possible, do it.
Okay, all right, Ray?
Yes, I had an Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting this afternoon, it's one of our month, normal monthly ones, they kinda, the state kinda sprang on us a new program that they're implementing, that you have to, we have to react to by June 27th. They've come up with approximately $25 million for our area for leveraging existing projects to help get the scope of work done. One of them happens to be, they wanna replace the light at Spring Hill and Highway 20. And what, and what that can, one of the leveraging points is, if it has something to do with safety, or pedestrian travel, or something like that, so I asked the state representative, I said, was that a possibility, we could advocate then to get some scope of work done to change the, you know-
Slope.
The slope on the, on the intersection there, and she said, yeah, that would be, that very definitely could be. She said, understand, we've got seven, seven or eight projects that have already been approved, that can be leveraged, not all of them would possibly be picked, we don't get any say in which ones get picked, we have to give it our best shot, get the information of which ones we would like, to have this extra money spent on doing something for scope of work, get it to the state by the 27th, it's the Franny, and then their whole group decides which ones get, get the money. So I wanna try and meet with Ron tomorrow and say, here's the projects that are on the list, Roger Nyquist was advocating, he didn't think much of the scope of work for the, the, cutting down the size of that curve, he would rather have some of the money advocated for fixing the intersection at Independence Highway. He said, you get that all fixed, he said, then your traffic issues go away, 'cause the trucks aren't gonna be coming into town. So, I mean, so each of the, each of the MPO representatives, we can all submit ideas to the state by the 27th, and then maybe one or two of them will get picked, but we don't get any say in which ones get picked. So I wanna talk to Ron tomorrow and see, here's what the options are, we gotta go for something relatively quickly.
So that's the wisdom of Bodat again, as to who gets what?
It's, the ODOT gets to make those choices. They said, here's the money that's being allocated to our area, about $25 million over three, three different areas, and give it your best shot, okay?
Okay, thank you, Ray. Mike?
No.
Okay, and I didn't have anything this evening, so Peter, did you have anything?
I just, I'm so proud of my adopted city for having its Veterans Day parade, which honors living veterans, but Monday is a holiday, but it's, it's not to honor the living, it's to honor those who've given the ultimate sacrifice. So I would just ask that people, even though it's a day in which we customarily start the summer with barbecues and all kinds of fun things, that people, in whatever way they, they do, would remember those that did sacrifice in that way for our country, that's all.
Well, thank you, which did remind me, so there is the War Memorial, Memorial Day celebration out at Timberland Park, on Memorial Day at 11 o'clock, so, I'll be there that day, and that's usually a very, very nice event, it's very well worth attending, so, yeah, they usually do the cannon, so, yeah, okay.
Howitzer.
Yeah, so, anything else? Okay, staff have anything? No, so, okay.
We've seen each other enough.
So our next, for work session would be June 11th, and then our regular next regular meeting is June 13th, so with that, we're adjourned, and thank you.